Free members of the board, so we can do business.
Is anybody else expected to be here?
Yeah, I think so. They're probably just running a few minutes late.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. So I'd like to call to order the Hollis School Board for Wednesday, October 2nd. I'm going to dispense with the public input preambles or anything, so we'll get ready to do the agenda here. So we'll call for agenda adjustments?
We don't have any adjustments, but I just wanted to let the board and the committee know, we did pass out an updated revenue and expense report. The totals didn't change, just some of the buckets where the numbers were, and Kristen will review that for you.
Okay.
And then hot off the press today, I have enrollment numbers that you have in front of you for Hollis, and then we also provide you for the SAU, so you can see the trend. Probably spend a couple of seconds on those when we actually talk a little bit about the budget.
Mm-hmm.
And then lastly, I just wanted to provide you with the Consumer Price Index, because that's traditionally what the Budget Committee will use when working to start setting guidance, and that actually came from Tom, Chair of the Budget Committee. So I just wanted you to have that information, especially for Caroline, who's our Budget Rep, but for everybody else as well. That's it for this time.
Okay, we'll move to approval of the meeting minutes. Yes?
I think we need to amend the agenda to reconsider policy EHAB under deliberation.
Is that also the recommendation through the committee as well?
Yes.
Okay. So let's, we'll just make a note of that in the agenda, if someone will keep me honest.
Yep.
Where would you like to do that? At the bottom, or we want to, would that be in the discussion session, or deliberations themselves?
I think it would be under the deliberations with the other policies.
Okay, got it. Yep. All right. We'll just add it to that, to that item. Anything else before we move on? Agenda adjustments?
No.
Anything?
We did discuss, I need to, I'm supposed to move to approve the minutes? Yes?
Yes, so we'll-
You have to go out one?
Uh, no, I just didn't open up my-
You can-
You can borrow mine.
What's nice-
Thank you, I'm just rushing in here.
So we'll go ahead and move to the meeting minutes?
Okay, so read it, like, read this all out, like this.
So you say, "I move," and then we all just with these amendments?
Okey-dokey. Here it goes. All right, I am moved to approve the Hollis School Board minutes of September 4th, 2019, with the following amendments that were offered. Page three, line 46, replace utilize with utilized. Page nine, line 16, replace wonder with wonderful. Page 10, line 38, delete price, following the quotation. Page 13, line six, delete the comma before the period. Page 13, line 34, replace clause with cause. Page 14, line 48, replace mister with ms.
Any other-
Motion by, am I, no, okay.
That's just for the record. So we have a second.
Second.
Okay. Any other amendments that the members want to call out? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay.
I'll get better with time on that. First go.
Get you to do that, so you get better with time.
Do we have any other meetings, minutes to approve? No more, no other minutes to approve?
I don't believe so. It doesn't have to end up. Dawn is not reminding us of anything.
All right, we're keeping it crisp here, then we're going right to nominations, resignations, and correspondence.
And at this time, we have none.
Okay. Principals' reports.
In your packet, Candy and Paula provided their usual update. Our current total district, 644 students. We opened up and had all our open houses and everything, I finished. We had very good feedback on that. We had done some things differently this year, and they worked out, and the principals were very happy about that. We are working, as Candy tells you, on budget quotes, trying to find some different prices on a number of different things up at Hughes, and the same at HPS. Also, we've installed the shades that we had worked on last year. Paula is working actively on the Hollis budget, and I'll give you an update on where we are and some first-round items. Mrs. Lewis hosted the first all-school town meeting, where they reviewed the rooms at HPS, and that went very well. And we have, once again, started the Golden Trashcan Awards. That's a way we work with our upper school students on neatness and cleanliness. It's amazing what a little gold trashcan will do to get kids to want to participate in picking up things on the floor. And just a really solid opening, kind of from our discussion this morning, we had leadership this morning, it's kind of hard to believe we're already in October.
Yeah. I see we're fully staffed custodial-wise, that Hughes, as well.
Yes, yep.
Which is good to hear, as well.
Yeah, we still are, we are staffed here in Hollis, but we are still struggling for hourly workers. And if anybody out there listening has anybody interested in custodial positions, we have some at the co-op district.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Our norm really hasn't changed, they provided the extensive breakdown, but we're very comfortable there. And that is it for the principals' update, but I will try to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay.
Are we gonna, you know, we typically in the fall get a bigger presentation from the principals', you know, goals and et cetera, do you-
Tomorrow night.
At the SAU?
Yes. Just, that's a great piece. For the first time at the SAU level, really to highlight one child moving through the whole system, the annual goals presentation would be done by the six principals for the three districts, kind of showing that evolution of child arrives in Hollis or Brookline, here's the path.
Yeah.
Then they hand it off to the middle school, then they hand it off to the high school. So that will be tomorrow night.
I think it makes sense, it gives a holistic view, and lets other districts see what's going on, and home better sharing.
Right, and again, we're gonna do it, and if the feedback is that we still need to do something at the local board, we can always add that back in.
Sounds good. Any other questions relating to the principals' report, from anyone? Okay. Seeing none, we're gonna move into the public input. If there's any at this time, we'll open the floor for any public input.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I'm here tonight, just in my capacity as the state representative for Hollis, and I just wanted to report out that on the 26th of September, the budget was passed, and part of that budget was more education funding based on a formula. And I just wanted to share that Hollis received $116,000 and change, $116,398, and I just wanted to let the public know that, because it's really important that folks up in Concord are really focused on ensuring that we provide an adequate education for everyone. So that was it.
Thank you for all your efforts. I know the countless hours that have gone into finally arriving at that. So thank you. Yeah, absolutely, yep.
Any other input at this time?
How much do I get?
We get a line item on that?
Have to do the calculation. Okay, well, we'll go ahead and continue here into our discussion portion with Medicaid to School Assistant Superintendent topics.
So in your board packet, you'll find a memo entitled Medicaid to School Legislative Changes. So as you all know, the Hollis School District contributes, or participates in the Medicaid to Schools program, it's a revenue source for the district. It essentially allows us to receive reimbursements for rehabilitative services that take place for students that are on IEPs that are deemed medically necessary. So the total allotment for all of SAU 41 is roughly $275,000. Last year for FY18, the Hollis, or FY19, the Hollis portion was $31,000. In FY18, that number was $55,000. So I highlight that because on August 29th, the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, which oversees the Medicaid to School program, made an emergency rule change, which really substantially limits who can actually write orders that allow for the reimbursement under the Medicaid to Schools program. So essentially, there was a phrase in the law saying that a licensed practitioner of the healing arts was somebody that could actually write these orders. And that was sort of a catch-all for the schools, that included our school guidance counselors, school psychologists, speech pathologists, OT. So if they wrote the order as a member of the IEP team, the district would seek reimbursement for students that qualified. Under the new rule changes on August 29th, they've removed the language licensed practitioner of the healing arts, and the only one that can write orders for Medicaid reimbursement are a physician, a physician's assistant, or an advanced practice-registered nurse. So this creates quite an issue for the schools, given the fact that essentially, all of the individuals who have been writing these orders for us to receive reimbursement will no longer qualify under the new rule change. So as a result, we've taken several actions. First, we've been in very close contact with our council. And one of the things that we're gonna continue to do is we're gonna continue to log for Medicaid. This is just best practice, this provides us with an opportunity to actually document the services that we provide students, which obviously, for accounting purposes, is a really good thing. However, we will not submit those. And we've been told very clearly by DHHS that any submission that, for any services rendered after the date of the rule change, will not be accepted. So we will not be submitting for Medicaid. Also, we are currently in the process of creating, as you know, the FY21 budget. We essentially are creating that budget without that revenue line. So the FY21 budget will reflect that we'll have a shortfall of revenue of approximately $31,000 based upon the FY19 revenue. And also, we're taking a close look at budgets this year and seeing, you know, how we can make up that loss of revenue. Also, the New Hampshire Special Ed Administrators Association, along with the New Hampshire School Superintendents Association and the Business Administration Association, continue to lobby DHHS, JLCAR, the Department of Education, to get further clarification on the rule, and really to advocate that we are, go back to the previous rules before they enact permanent rules, which are scheduled for sometime in February. And then also, the regional special ed directors, we continue to meet on a monthly basis, we're meeting next Monday, where we're looking at really creative ways, because essentially what we'd like to do is we want to continue to receive the reimbursement. How can we do that under the existing law? How can we actually get doctors to write these orders that do not put us in a position where we're violating FERPA, that allow us to have open communications with physicians? Already, that's a difficult thing, we get releases of information to talk to doctors a lot, it can often be a challenge. I talked to one director who said that she called 10 physicians within a 30-minute radius of their school district and received zero return calls. There was really is a shortage of physicians to be able to, you know, to address the issue that we have before us. So we'll keep you posted, but as of right now, it does not seem like the DHHS is gonna reverse course on the emergency rules.
Bob, did they give you any indication why they made this emergency ruling?
Yeah, so their argument is that they, we, the state of New Hampshire has been out of compliance with federal Medicaid to Schools guidelines, and that that line, practitioner of the healing arts, is something that's very specific to New Hampshire, and is not something that you find in other states. So in the process of trying to, you know, comply with the federal law, that's what resulted in the emergency rule change.
So are the federal guidelines worded exactly as this new rule?
There's a lot of debate about that. I actually met with the head of the Medicaid to Schools program, and the other special education directors, and I think the consensus of the group was we did not get a direct answer.
So as I was reading through, as I was reading through this, I think the one, the one thing that jumped out at me, in addition to some of the other changes that you summarized, was that they're pulling out the psychologist piece to be able to recommend things. And, you know, it seems to me that the change is getting more medically focused, and maybe not so much the, you know-
Mental health.
The mental health piece.
Yeah.
Do you see that, or is that just a misread?
Well, what DHHS would say is, oh, a psychologist, if you have a psychologist in your school, they can write orders, but they have to be a board-certified psychologist, and not a DOE school-certified psychologist. And that's the hang-up, because basically, what Medicaid to Schools, or DHHS is saying is, the school is just a setting where students receive Medicaid services, and as a result, they need to be board-certified school psychologists, speech pathologists. The problem for us in the school setting is, they're not, they're DOE certified, they need to be DOE certified in order to be able to practice in a school. So DHHS would say, oh, you can have a speech path do that, but it has to be someone who's board-certified, and the people in our schools are not, in fact, nearly all of the public schools, they're not board-certified, they're DOE certified, and that's a big distinction.
Do you think that this will cause some folks to seek that additional certification? Do you see that as becoming a need? Because I just think the psychological, the psychologist pieces, to me, just comes across as an important component, you know, to have.
The problem is, is there's such a shortage, school psych is a great example, whether they are board-certified, whether they're DOE certified, there's just not a lot out there.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, each district, depending on their scale, is gonna respond differently. I mean, I've talked to both of the directors from Manchester and Ashford, they're losing millions of dollars. Now, the ability for them to bring a physician on staff does exist, assuming they can find one, one that's willing to come on board. For a district like ours, where, you know, the Hollis portion of this is $31,000, the cost benefit just really isn't there. However, we do contract for many of our services with Boothby Therapeutic Services, and I had a conversation with their council on Friday, it said that they're looking into hiring a physician that perhaps could consult with districts, and orders could be written through this consulting physician. Again, there's some FERPA issues that we have to address. So right now, I feel like a lot of the district, all of the districts across the state are scrambling somewhat to see how are we going to respond. It doesn't look like this rule's going away. The emergency rule will become permanent in February.
So I feel like this is a double-edged sword. The difficult part for us, funding and facilitating services, is obvious, like you've described it, and we can intuit, but there is a positive side, in my view, and that is that I think for a lot of families, it's difficult to grapple with the distinction between the school model and the medical model, of who provides services, who calls for services, who authorizes services, how do those services get delivered. And perhaps in that respect, it will help clarify for both districts and for families, you know, that's very important, critically important distinction. But separate from that, in terms of staffing, we have a nurse position that we're trying to fill at the SAU level, and I don't think that's filled yet, or have you got that filled?
No, we've not had any applicants for the position.
So I'm wondering, ah, not even applicants, so I'm wondering if it might be worth looking at this from the SAU level, because your letter to the board, I guess it's for all the boards in our district, and it's a quarter of a million dollars you're talking about across the entire SAU. And I'm wondering if that position could be changed to be a nurse practitioner, or, you know, I can't remember the letters, ARPN, so that we would have an on-staff prescriber for these services who also fills a job that we already want. I mean, I recognize that we're struggling to get anyone at all, but it occurs to me we could try that.
Like a shared resource?
Yeah. Because all three districts have the same problem.
I do have a standing meeting with the nurses, and we're actually meeting this Friday, and this is a topic that I do want to discuss, the nursing position. My only concern about that is, I see these as two distinct issues. One is a revenue issue, and it's a very important revenue issue, but then the other one is really a student need. You know, the purpose of that nurse position, and again, that's using non-allocated IDEA funds, it really is to serve students. You know, we have a need when our nurses are out to be able to fill that, it's a health safety issue. My fear with that, Tammy, and of course, it's always up for discussion with the nurses, is if I had my choice between three days a week of nurse service to cover for our nurses when they're on field trips and at IEP meetings and at transition meetings, I'd rather have that than necessarily to have one person who we may not even be able to hire, to be able, whose job is to sit and write orders. I think, there are two issues I think that we maybe have to explore.
So is that demanding an occupation?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that time-consuming, and, okay.
And so do the orders have to come from someone within the district, or could the child's physician write the orders and then be reimbursed for?
The child's physician could write the orders.
Okay.
As a member of the IEP team, which would result in them either having to attend the meeting, or through another alternative means. So it's not as easy as saying, go get this signed by your doctor.
Right, right.
They have to be a part of the team.
Engaged.
Yeah. That's the hard part.
Yeah. Bob, you mentioned that New Hampshire's, you said maybe the only state out of, is that what you said? The only state that's not in compliance with the federal law?
I don't know if we're the only state, but I know this language of a practitioner, licensed practitioner of the healing arts, is specific to the state of New Hampshire, which is creating the compliance issue.
So has there been work already to look at what other states are doing?
Yeah, that's what they're currently doing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Looking to neighboring states for their-
And this really is a trend, when you look at, you know, our three major revenue sources, special ed aid, which we used to call CAT aid, IDEA, and Medicaid to Schools, they're all going down pretty significantly as well. So this tends to be in line with what we're seeing from those other two revenue sources.
Okay.
And they're going down via budgets from the state level?
No, those remain actually fixed, which is, part of the issue is there's a fixed amount of money, the Medicaid to Schools is approximately $30 million. So, you know, that pool of money does not change. So our submissions, what we believe we can get reimbursement for goes up every year.
I see.
The problem is, is the pool of money remains the same.
Got it.
And that's a little bit of a generalization.
It's really unfortunate, I don't think people appreciate how much, over the past even five or 10 years, services have become so much more effective.
Yeah.
Treatments, therapies, approaches, never mind what's in the headlines yesterday, it's so much more effective. And it is more expensive, because it's a labor-intensive business.
Yeah. And just one other thing, just, you know, to sort of wrap this up, you know, a question came up, you know, this will not have an impact on the services we provide kids. This has an impact on our revenue and the amount of money we can get back to the district, but it will not impact, nor has it ever, how we write IEPs, always doing what is absolutely best for kids, that continues, we're just going to receive less revenue from Medicaid to Schools, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thanks for the detail.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
A PR on the SAV.
And I know, I want to be respectful to everyone's time, so as administrators complete what they need to do at the, you know, I'm fine with letting them go home early.
Yeah, we will look at that.
I will look to you as to-
What you might notice is Gina is not here.
Yeah.
We have, we've done our rotation, and I think everybody had a meeting off last month, and that's our plan this month, yeah.
Your guys' option.
Yep.
Okay, let's move to transportation.
I just wanted to give a quick update. You may know our longtime dispatcher, Kim, who was one of the, of the odd family, has moved on. We knew that would be happening. She has been replaced by a driver from within that they sent to training with the SDA in Merrimack, so she's very much up to speed. The transition occurred last week. I will be meeting regional manager and our new dispatcher next week, Gina and I, head has gone very well. One of the side benefits is that our dispatcher is now also a driver, which wasn't the case in the past, so it gives us another substitute. The transportation services so far have been very good. We had one morning where we had a driver on the way in get sick, so we had to quickly double up a route, but it went very well. I think the new safety arms and the cameras and all of those pieces have been well-received. I will tell you that we are experiencing growth in both towns, and it's not necessarily just in numbers, it's just distance, you know, so it's funny how towns, everybody comes in together and ages together and retires together and moves out. So as time goes on, buses don't tend to go into certain sections of town, because there's no children there. That is changing again. So we're really looking hard, it's not so much going to be a problem for us for FY21 in Hollis, but in Brookline, we will have some of those issues that we'll have to look at adjusting, and may have to add buses to the fleet.
Mm-hmm.
But I think it's on the way for Hollis, which you'll see in the enrollment numbers. You know, I think the feedback I've heard from parents has been very favorable to the new company. Their size and their scope has allowed us to, you know, easily get a driver from one of the other terminals.
Yeah. Excellent. Good to hear.
I was impressed that for the opening of school, they had a couple of subs that they brought in and living in hotels, so they could flex across the districts in the area, so that was cool.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions relating to transportation? All right, so moving on then.
Okay.
We're gonna go, continue on to the SAU Barn, CIP, and H-Step.
Correct. In your packet, you had a form that looks like this, it was towards the end of it, I'm gonna work off of that. We have, since last month, priced out 15 new items, those are all highlighted. I just wanted to go over a couple of critical elements that we have changed. First of all, we're moving, as a committee, have decided to move from calling it H-Step, because there's so much more that is non-energy related this time, to more of what was termed last week, facilities-first aid. Because we're addressing aging buildings, and that's really what's coming to the forefront. On the form, you'll see that we've added columns that we'll be using as we go into public presentations, where we have safety and security, so you'd know if it's that type of item, is it an energy savings, is it an end-of-life piece, is it already past its end of life, and we've been able to milk services out of it, any potential health issues, ADA or code compliance, space scheduling issues, or construction corrections. So there are a number of pieces there. I will highlight just really one or two items on this sheet that are significant and new this month. First is air handler number three. That is a large rooftop unit up at Hughes, that probably does 60% of your ventilation and your heating. That will be characterized as an end-of-life, almost past end-of-life. It is a $320,000 item, that has to be done basically no matter what. So we will probably be working with the Budget Committee and deciding on a warrant article for a bond, which will encompass all the projects. If that were not to pass, there would be a separate warrant article just for air handler three.
Right.
So to get that done. The other big piece is, HPS is, as you know, a very old building, it's in great shape, and we've done wonderful things here, but there is a line item in here for a sprinkler system. We do not have sprinklers here, so that is a safety, security type of component, and it protects, first, our most precious asset, students, and second, the physical asset of the building. But that's a $706,000 item, because you're retrofitting a sprinkler system into an old building, and it will require a, I'll call it massive underground tank, that would be the water storage tank, so in the emergency, you're not pulling from Rocky Pond, it's automatically coming out of the storage tank. And then at HPS, one of the other pieces, and we may decide to, you know, phase this in, do it all at once, we're not sure yet, is to do the exterior doors, which many of them are specifically started with the building and haven't been changed. To do every door is a $267,000 expense. So those are really the three big-ticket items. So we're right now at about another 25 items till the price out, that'll be here for next month, but we're at about $1,007,000. One of the things that the Budget Committee is looking for, and I think the answer from us is that, is that the board intent, and Caroline was there, that was what taught us, is our intent to be moving forward with the bond. Because their role is not to tell us whether to do something or not to do something, it should initiate here. And I made it clear to them that it was, I believe it's the board intent, we have not taken a formal position on that, because we're still gathering information, and still have a number of things to pull together. But I think from their reaction, they appreciated the format and the way it was being looked at, and understood the different rationale for CIP, H-Step, and- and understood the different rationale for CIP, H-Step, and facilities.
Do we anticipate that the first aid, I guess we're rebranding H-Step First Aid, Facilities First Aid. Will this committee be bringing forward funding recommendations other than a bond? Or are there other vehicles to be considered for? I mean, the project cost aside, just the vehicles that we, or options that we have for funding, do you see it going beyond a bond or other?
Well, there would be only two mechanisms for us to consider for something of this magnitude. One would be a traditional bond. The other, which we use for H-Step and we've used throughout the town, whether it's purchasing fire trucks, police cars, is the lease, a capital lease option.
Okay.
So it would qualify for both. As this is going on, we're also going to be working with the budget committee to look at, should we be refinancing our debt?
Yes.
It appears that rates are going to be going down. And one of the questions is, do we not only refinance our debt, but do we put this into it? Because there's a potential, if you have a larger dollar amount, that is more marketable.
Yes.
And sometimes that will impact the rates. So that is...
Is the committee looking into those aspects? Or is that something that the school board is gonna really need to spend time?
The rates and all that will be done by the business administrator, working with the budget committee.
Okay.
And I think if the budget committee feels they're favorable, then we would potentially roll them all into one if the warrant passed, obviously.
Yeah.
But we would obviously still consider just refinancing our debt anyways.
Okay. So I suspect we're gonna need some sort of recommendation, let's say by next month of some sort, that comes up from the committee so we can, you know, evaluate and adopt one of them so we can give a clear signal to the budget committee what we're planning to do and how we're planning to do it. Do you see, is that, do you see that happening? You know, we at a good enough pace?
I think next month, we would want the board to make a decision on just, do you believe you want to move forward or not move forward with this project? And the mechanism versus a lease or a bond, that can actually be delayed somewhat because you have the ability to word your warrant article. Because you wouldn't be purchasing either one of those until probably the April timeframe, most likely early May, if you were to pass it at annual meeting.
So I suspect we're gonna need an all-in number by that time to be able to take a position on moving forward on...
Andy, isn't the deadline for bonds per se, isn't there a mandated deadline in January for...
If you're doing a winter bond, so if we were gonna, so if you wanted to refinance the debt separately, you could look, they do a bond sale in the January winter frame. The best bang for a buck may be the two projects together.
Combined.
So we're not facing a January deadline, absolutely no matter what, for the warrant, if we wanted to go with bond?
No.
A decision deadline?
No, you would have to, you would have to start working on your...
Because when we were talking about potentially doing a bond for H-Step all those years ago, I just vaguely recall that there was some kind of January thing related to specifically two bonds. But if I'm wrong, that's right.
I, I'm sorry, finish.
Well, I just want, there's two bond sales. One is a winter where you have to be in by January date. The other is in the spring. And that's, that's a much larger sale.
Yes.
Because what they do is, everybody who passes a bond or a warrant for a substantial amount, it goes to the municipal bond bank of the state of New Hampshire and they sell it as the massive bond. And that's why we get the rate. So our, say, $2 million project would be added to all the other bonds. And, you know, a couple of years ago, that would have been in there with Salem $75 million school. So when all of a sudden you're going out with that much buying power, that's why you can see some tremendous rates from the New Hampshire Bond Bank.
So I can't help, I mean, from a standpoint of, you know, making such a proposal attractive to the community and things, it almost seems like saying, hey, we're combining this bond with current debt that's eventually going to save, and particularly if we can show the savings of moving to, you know, rolling it into a combined bond. I think that bolsters the whole package, you know, the attractiveness of the whole warrant article that we're putting forward for consideration. So, you know, it's just something that, you know, particularly if we're gonna be able to show what that upside is versus staying in the instrument that we're in currently.
Yep, absolutely.
Between the air handler at Hughes and the sprinkler system here, you're already talking about $1 million.
Correct.
As a default request because those are critical. We can't do without them, so.
Right, so that's already the alternative is not much of a difference.
I did, to your initial point, next month, I would like to see the board take a position, even if we don't have the final dollar amount.
Okay.
Because I think the final dollar amount, we can give you a pretty solid range.
Right, okay.
And then ultimately, we would vote on the warrant, which will be the exact dollar amount.
Okay, that's fine. So we'll be prepared to consider that in November? Any other, anything else?
Well, just as a, I think we're all set on the facilities piece. There is a study in the packet from John Penny, who went around and did an energy piece. That was there because that'll become part of our public presentations and things. And I wanted the board to at least have it to review and to look at. It's not something that we need to discuss at this point. Basically, what he highlights is that Air Handler Three is a number-one priority. He's done some extensive work on the Munters ventilation unit that's up at Hughes. And he feels that is something that, through proper programming, because over the years, what happens is we lose power in those things and things get off sequence. So he's got some suggestions on that. But it's a, it's a long technical report and I'm not gonna sit here and go through the details. But I wanted to make sure it was in your packet so you had it.
Okay.
So as the representative to this committee, I have, this is new to me too. I just must have come out a couple of days ago. And I have no idea what these pages are, the ESM pages, what they mean. Like you said, they're highly technical, so.
And we'll have a better...
We're asking the board to be patient until this is digested.
Correct. And we'll have a better understanding. And as we get closer to public presentations, obviously, we'll be presenting at the boards. And John is one of those individuals, along with our architect, who'll be the experts of record.
And they can come in and kind of walk us through some of this?
Yep, absolutely.
So I think one of the critical things that we'll need from Kim or whoever presents this, if it's Dave or John, is, you know, some of these items, payback is 16 years, payback is 50 years. I think that doesn't tell the tale of whether or not it's critical, whether or not it adds infrastructure value we can't live without. So for example, the air handler, it's a 50-year payback. It's greater than 50 years, but the building can't function without it.
Right.
So I, you know, I want to ensure that if he re-presents this report in some fashion, that there's some additional language or mark in some way that indicates that the...
This is part of the first aid.
How optional and, well, I mean, I've been through these meetings, so I know there's more, a little more to the discussion around what's, what's more elective and what's less elective.
Right.
Well, I think that's good, I agree, because I think that's gonna be important because we can get into a dollar discussion with Budcom just on item three here that says the payback is greater than 50 years.
Right.
And what they, what kind of trumps that whole kind of conversation is, we gotta have it.
Right.
It's not necessarily part of improving our heat picture or our energy picture because all these other things do that. This is kind of like, you gotta have this unit.
It's infrastructure.
It's infrastructure, we need to have it.
Right.
Okay.
Excuse me. Since you guys jumped ahead on the agenda, would it be possible for me to ask some questions about transportation?
Uh, yeah.
The agenda was published, the public comment was supposed to be from 6:20 to 6:30 and I walked in at 6:23 and you guys were well into transportation.
Yes.
Okay, is that...
So I'll just look at, I want to get just feedback from the board to open public input again. Is that okay?
Once this topic is closed, I don't want to interrupt.
Yeah, once we're done with transportation, we'll revisit.
Okay.
So that's really where we're at with the H-Step in the barn. I think we'll be able to give you a solid number. And then I think the discussion really is some guidance, where do you want the number to come in? Because there are, as Tammy cites, essential items like Air Handler Three has to happen. But if you want to put a cap on the bond and say it's X number of million, then what we're doing is prioritizing what we could also take out. You know, because also remember that no matter what we do, we only have 10 weeks during the summer. So this will be phased in over time with priority items happening first and balancing the needs of both buildings and what needs to be done.
Do you see that work going beyond the 10-week window?
There are some pieces that we could do. I always hesitate because it's quite a process to do the background checks and everything for me to feel comfortable having people in school.
Sure.
So I would prefer not to. But if we were finishing up something because something was delayed or a pot didn't come in, that's no different than if something broke and we had to bring workers in. But we really, you know, try to limit, as you know, as many of you volunteer in our system, it's an extensive process to go through and it does have a cost related to.
So 10, and within that first 10 weeks, we probably could get a bulk of the work done, but it doesn't guarantee that we may not, we may need to go into a next cycle.
Correct. And some of the work could be designed to be done over a longer holiday period, like the winter break, which might be about 10 to 14 days. But like, Air Handler Three is, that doesn't worry me as much because nobody's coming into the building. That's a crane. And the rooftop, not that you want to have a crane around, but we've had to do it before with students in session.
Great, okay. Any other things related to...
Well, I wanted to visit again, I love the format that you've got with H-Step or whatever we're gonna call it, First Aid and CIP. And all the columns beside it, safety, security, energy savings, you know, the format itself is new for, a new way to, that we talked about in the facilities meeting, to kind of refocus the informational aspect of this, is to try to get that sense of priority, to try to get that sense of elective versus not elective and timeframe, et cetera. But I think it's important just to go ahead and say, even if everyone's already intuited from what Andy said, that this is the case. These buildings are old, they're cobbled together, you know, they have additions added on in decades. And there, we have, through the, through the energy project, we discovered tremendous numbers of, of problems of efficiency that were costing the district tons of money. And, you know, Rob coined the term "heating Hollis" because we discovered that the buildings were just blasting heat out into the environment. As their intent, they were, the systems that were in place were intended to do that. We've kind of gotten a hold of all that stuff, most of it, most of it. What we're looking really at with these items, this long, long list, if you print it out, it looks like this, is, and there's a page two here, is really reclaiming these facilities for the next two to three decades at a minimum.
Absolutely.
Our architect, who has extensive experience building schools and who did fantastic work on the first stage of this project, says the rule of thumb this year for a cost per square foot of a school facility is $300. So we're talking multiple millions of dollars if you were gonna build from scratch, raise these buildings, or somehow have the students somewhere else while we, whatever it would take. And that's just building. That's not where would you put kids and staff and education alternatively while you build, et cetera, all those kinds of logistics. Many, many, many millions of dollars. So when you look at these kind of numbers and think, Andy remarked, do we want to put a cap on our, on what we want to ask the public to fund? You have to think of the opportunity costs of allowing things to decay because we put them off so long, because they're expensive and nobody wants to kind of grapple with that, that implications of spending. But as they decay, you're looking at forcing the hand of a future board with a building that isn't able to be renovated anymore. So this isn't about nice-to-haves or urgent, we must have it or the building closes, like the air handler. This is mostly about sort of reclaiming these facilities and renewing them so they become excellent places to learn and work for multiple generations going forward.
Right, okay, good input. Anything else related to Facility First Aid? Questions or comments? All right, so I guess, so in November, we're gonna, let's expect that we're gonna be asked to take some sort of a position on the project, the scope of the project, and in most cases, the, a general sum of what the project may cost. I do like the idea that we'll have a contingency, possible contingency bond that will, in case that one bond fails, we gotta get those handlers done and put out there. So, and we've done that kind of thing in the past. So that's not something that we, you know, is new. All right, so we're gonna close the first aid, Facilities First Aid item. We have a request to go back to the transportation and open up some public input. So input, I just want to point out that is typically for somebody to come to the mic and ask us to consider something. It is not necessarily a Q and A time. However, if you, if you have a couple of questions, we'll give you the latitude, maybe two, two questions or so. And then my colleagues could say, hey, enough, we need to move on. So they could hold me to that. So we'll go ahead and open that up for public input now relating to transportation.
I'm assuming I introduce myself, so I'm Jennifer Norrie. I have a third grader and a kindergartner.
Yeah.
And we are a family that has been associated with a private pre-K preschool here in town for, since we moved to town. And with a 10-day-old in the middle of a school year. Great. But the, the point I'm trying to make is, is we've had some problems with miscommunication, I'll say, because I'm not the owner of Hollis Academy and I don't work for the bus company and I don't work for the SAU. I'm just a mom, okay? And there's, I guess, a historical cap on the amount of students there. The owner of Hollis Academy is trying desperately to hire somebody else, but as we all know, there's no one to hire. So my question here is this. She has been bending over backwards to run the van herself, okay? To take the extra to school and drop the extra, pick up the extra in the afternoon. So what is gonna happen the day that that van, because it's not young, doesn't start? Or the day that she is sick? What is, how are those children supposed to get to school? That is my question. Because at this point, the bus barn lady is not taking her calls. She's literally not answering them, not, she's screaming them, she's not calling Autumn back. She's not, you know, and, and so, like, what, that's my question. Like, I understand that, I understand the numbers don't work this year, I get that. However, my concern is getting the kids to school and getting them safely back to where their parents have decided they need to be until their parents can pick them up, okay? To where we, as parents, have vetted and we feel comfortable with them being. And, you know, that's, that's my concern. What happens when that old rickety van doesn't start? And those six to eight kids can't get to school? So.
Well, I've talked to Autumn. And there has traditionally been a cap. Enrollment went up. No one at the SAU was consulted or the bus bond. It was just assumed that we could provide transportation. Our transportation is limited by the number of students who fit on the bus. We do everything on a daily basis to take kids where they need to go as much as we can. So Beaver Brook, the Science Center.
Wild Salamander.
Wild Salamander, you know, the school where your children go. But it's not, first of all, it's not our responsibility for that transportation. It's a private business who is charging customers for a service. Now, we will do everything we can. And to my knowledge, every day in the afternoon now, we have our bus people at Hughes go on the bus, make sure there is the right number of seats, and then the children board and are transported.
Right, I'm not talking about the children on the bus, the 12 children on the bus. I'm talking about the overflow children.
Right.
Now, I fully, I'm not the owner.
I know.
I'm just a mom.
Right.
And I fully admit that there was some miscommunication. Because from my perspective, what I do every day, because I work for the federal government, I am, I authorize and de-authorize places to take food stamps. So my job is to protect food stamp integrity for the 46 million Americans who need it. There is 240-some-odd-thousand retailers nationwide. And there's 70 of us. And that's what I do. So I look at it from a business perspective. So I wonder, when the new contract was created, did we go over with these companies? So I wonder, when the new contract was created, did we go over with these companies what those numbers were? Did we, you know, given that it's a new company, i.e. a new bus contract, did we, did we reach out to Beaver Brook and Wild Salamander and, and any other locations and say, hey, we just want to touch bases with you because this is a longstanding tradition, but we got a new company, so, hey, I'm just, I'm just, I understand that errors were made, I get that. What I'm trying to figure out is what happens to those six to eight kids?
So may I comment?
Yeah.
The, the school board's job is policy and oversight of the management of the schools. We do not have the authority, authorization, responsibility, freedom to negotiate this kind of execution. That's for the administration to manage. I know we've talked and I enjoyed our conversation very much. The policy that is built on the back of state law has to leave us the freedom to deal with different enrollments in different years. When you ask, what if we ask the school bus, did we ask Wild Salamander, et cetera? Wild Salamander cannot tell us last May, when we signed a contract, what their enrollment would be in September. We don't know which parents are going to show up for Hollis Academy or for any of these destinations. We owe bus transportation to students who are coming to school and going home. We owe some similar flexibility for the destination children are going for their childcare, but it depends on enrollment, it doesn't depend on some pre-negotiated seats.
Yeah, so in addition to that, though, I'm aware that there's a process in the handbook that, there's a, there's approval processes that people have to submit to have, you know, their child dropped off or picked up. And there's some sort of approval process that the, that they can submit on and get approval from here that we, you know, it's also a communication path, so we know what people are looking for. So I would suspect if we hit that, you know, during that approval process, if we hit that, that limit, we're not approving any more requests at this point, so I don't know.
Just to follow up on the question you asked, the bus company was sold, but the management team is the same management team that's been in place for the last twenty years. So in terms of the historical number, it's, the people that Autumn was talking to haven't changed at all when this transpired. I spoke directly to Autumn, it was her belief that if she had enrolled her full number of sixty kids, that it was my responsibility to transport those kids. It's a private business. The town licensed her for sixty, that doesn't mean we provide transportation for sixty kids. And our buses change every day because one day they might be going to dad's house, the next day they're going to Grammy and grandma's house. So the, every afternoon for about forty-five minutes, the office does an amazing job of making sure everybody gets the right place. In terms of the van, again, it, I would worry very much about the kids and I would do everything I could to help the situation if that van broke down, okay? So if our athletic van was available, we'd see if we could send somebody over and help out. But I struggle with the fact that it's a private entity.
And see, I struggle with the fact that I'm a taxpayer and they're in town, okay? And, and so that's where I, I mean, just.
Right, but the piece is for, for legal purposes, I have to bring kids to school and bring kids home.
Where does it, I, because I've looked everywhere online, where does it say specifically you have to bring kids home?
From, we have to provide transportation to and from school.
Well, no, I know, but it doesn't say, I couldn't find it.
Oh, I don't, I, I stand.
Where it says specifically that they have to go home.
I stand corrected.
Okay.
We're using a different definition of home. I mean home when they leave, so going to your after-school care, to me, is home. It's where the parent wants them in the afternoon. So if they were going to Grammy and grandpa's, that's it. But when a private entity is asking us to subsidize their business through our transportation, we will do as much as we possibly can fit on the bus, but once the bus is filled for safety reasons, she's got to use her van. And that van used to be dedicated to this community and then she expanded and was using that van to bring in other students from other areas. I've had extensive conversations, I'd be happy to follow up with you because it is, we took a lot of backlash about that for something that we didn't even know was occurring. We don't know on day one of school how many kids are going to each location.
But see, and that just, that goes back to, I reported in February, when I registered my kindergartner, that he was going to Hollis Academy. So again, it goes back to communication because I have to wonder if we went through all the paperwork that was submitted, how many children were correctly reported to the school in a timely manner that they, and then it went over and parents, parents made plans, parents.
Was your child left, not, did not receive the transportation you expected? I just meant to ask, were you, are you some?
No, well, at this point.
Your kid vanished, right?
Yeah, my, my.
Okay, so your needs were met. So the other piece I want to say on this is our policies, our practices, the way contracts are done with, with the bus company, the way the pragmatics of, you know, a bus isn't an Uber. And we can't, there are only seventy-five seats, seventy, I forgot how many seats per typical bus. So we can't say, oh, tomorrow, a hundred new kids are going to Beaver Brook and we have to divert buses to Beaver Brook. It's, it's literally not possible to do that. So there's a, there's a pragmatic matter of, of determining how many children are going to be on a particular route.
Right, and that's what I'm.
And then assigning certain buses to that route. And it would require an extraordinary situation to, in my mind, to change the routes.
No, and I, I'm, I'm just, what I'm saying.
So, no, wait, this is, this addresses your point, I mean, not your point, I feel like it addresses your concern and I think it is larger. It seems to me the only pragmatic way, because I worked on negotiating that contract, et cetera, as we all did as part of the SAU governing board. And that is, the pragmatics of this have to be that you submit your, your form like in the, in the handbook as you did, and there must be a deadline after which, we are not responsible for new people coming in and saying we want that transportation also. We would have to be able to say, if there's a seat, fine, but if there isn't, we can't be adding a multi-thousands-dollar bus with the driver pressures, et cetera, because people feel like they can take whatever bus they want to whatever destination they want, given whatever day they're in. It's not possible with small children.
No, and I, and I don't, I don't have a, what I'm, I guess my frustration is, I feel like myself and every single other parent who I've talked to, we turned in our paperwork. We turned in our paperwork in February to Autumn. We turned in our paperwork in February and March to the school, to the school. You know, we turned in everything and then all of a sudden it was, boom, this is not working. And as a parent, as a working parent, this was a problem, you know?
Do we know, do we know that all the parents who needed, who wanted these seats, Andy submitted their application in a way that gave you time?
I, I don't know that, the piece would be that, that is a bus company issue and an Autumn issue because.
But see, it's in the handbook that we're supposed to let you guys know.
Right, no, and we greatly appreciate that. What I'd like to suggest, Jennifer, because my bigger concern, which is the one you brought forward tonight, is what would happen to the six or eight kids if the van breaks down? That, that concerns me greatly because.
No, I mean, we've figured this out for now, you know? But moving forward, how do we do this in a safe manner, an equitable manner, and how do we get the kids safely to school and safely to their after-school location?
If you could, if you'd be willing to just provide me either email or a phone message, I will follow up with you, because my worry is those six or eight kids. It really, I don't want to see a van break down. I think we've solved the kids who are on the buses, I really do, and we've got a system here at the school.
But I just, as a parent, I feel like I did everything that I was supposed to do and then this all came out of left field, you know? And, and that, I know that everybody probably feels that way about something occasionally. However, moving forward, how do we prevent this next year?
But your child wasn't affected, right? Your child got to school where they're supposed to get, et cetera?
My child was, my children.
Children.
Were on a bus at some point where it was, Hollis Academy was called and said, and they said that they were leaving children behind. We didn't know which children they were leaving behind and I happened to have been around and was there for the phone call. And needless to say, I, most people don't know me, but I, I had an incident with a caretaker last fall and my, my three-year-old now, he got scalded at the babysitter's. And I had to spend two and a half weeks sleeping on a cot at Shriners, not knowing if he was going to be able to use his hands ever again. So I have a very high level of where are my children and who's taking care of them going on, and that's, that's a personal thing, I understand that, but we all have our demons.
And, and thank goodness it, it didn't turn out worst-case scenario for sure.
But I'm just saying.
My concern, though, is, is that you're representing your need and our district didn't actually fail you. That's great. So I'm not sure how comfortable I am as a board member with an individual from the community representing other people's concerns, a private entity's concerns, and I would concur with Andy, that this is not a matter for a board meeting at this.
Right. We're not going to be able to adjudicate this tonight or even figure out answers.
No, but if I could just finish up, if, if you contact the, I deal with this all the time, at multiple levels, and I'm happy to help.
No, I just, I like to say, and I understand where, where Tammy's coming from, I just, most of the parents at Hollis Academy are working parents, and I happen to, you know, have checked the schedule because honestly, I don't come to these things all that often. And I literally ran the kids home, turned around, threw them out of the car, and came back. That's how I, you know, but I am ending my fiscal year and all of my reports were turned in by noon today for FY nineteen, so it's on the books, as it were, after action starts tomorrow morning, and, you know, I, I had the time, so that's why I'm here.
Excellent.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move ahead now to the fiscal year financial updates.
So, as Andy had mentioned, I give you a revised version at this meeting this evening. The end result did not change. Kelly and I just discovered somebody, basically the buckets were off a little, but in the end. If you remember back in May, we actually reported that we concerned that we were probably not going to be able to have anything to give back based on what we were going to see for the rest of the year. That is not true. We do have eighty-two thousand to give back to the voters. Some of the reasons for such, for legal education, we had quite a few parapositions that were unfilled for last year, and we also didn't use the substitutes as much. We are still in a huge substitute crunch in the fact of finding bus drivers. As Andy said, hourly people and substitutes are part of that, are hard to find. Good to report for this year, as of right now, we are fully staffed for Hollis, so that should be an even keel for that regular education line. In terms of special education, the contracted services for special education children went a bit over, not nearly as much, again, that we were thinking, which hence allowed some of the eighty-two thousand to give back. In reverse, some of the contract services for regular students like speech, vision, there was the potential that, for vision, that didn't materialize, but we were kind of holding just in case. In speech, we actually used our existing speech employees to take over instead of contacting out. So that gave us a decent amount of savings. In terms of the telephone, for, we had a slight increase, which Rich, our IT director of SAU, then turned around and said, well, then, we're changing, and we are now have brand-new companies for not only Hollis, but some of our other buildings in the other districts. And that went into effect September first. So hopefully we'll see some decent savings with that because from what I'm seeing, it was a big change. Utilities, a lot higher. We were, our first lab, FY eighteen, FY nineteen, we were hoping for some serious gains in terms of all that we went through with H-Step and everything. And reality is those savings are going to be a lot slower. We do still get savings, but not nearly as fast as we were expecting. So the budget that was provided for last year didn't quite meet. But I know that Dick is doing his analysis, I think he's been asking me for a lot of information to do, to present to you that what the savings has been. So I think, Tammy, do you know when he may provide that?
I was supposed to talk to him today and he had an illness, so we're going, we could put that off for a couple of days.
But that, I suspect that higher than expected utility is the result of the peak demand issue?
That has a lot to do with it, along with the fact that, again, FY eighteen and nineteen, what was capped for that, particularly for electric, was not very realistic in terms of, you know, spending so much money for all the solar panels, it didn't foresee quite that quickly. Another with FY eighteen, we only got half a year and so forth. So I think with this twenty-one's budget and so forth, it will still be low because we're now seeing, we now got changed over to an R-rating for Eversource, which deals with all of those surcharges that made up the biggest portion of the electric bill. So I think with this year, a lot of the changes, we are going to see what we were expecting in the first year and a half.
It just took longer to realize it.
Exactly.
But I do want to say, the savings was realized from a dollar amount because we took it out of the budget. We just had to borrow from other lines because it went over. But the, the dollar amount that we had talked about during budget season was taken out of the budget. And I do want to thank Kristin and everybody because, you know, we were concerned about our projections and now we've been able to return eighty thousand dollars to taxpayers. And I'll give you a big piece that was not able to be done in phase one, are the lights we sit under, you know, and that was fifteen percent of the savings. So you're looking at, you know, a significant amount that we already had taken out. So I, I do think it'll get better, I think, once we do some of the round two pieces, if the community supports that, we'll continue to move forward. But at the same time, I also, as an educator, don't want to lose sight of the, the environmental change from a learning environment for our students.
Absolutely.
You know, if you just think of the space we're sitting in, we couldn't have held meetings here years ago because our windows were basically a one for our factor and the wall was a three. So it was like a wind tunnel. So again, the Yomans work that goes in, and just for the new board members, you know, expense and revenue reports weren't a regular occurrence. They are now and they have been for our last five years and the whole approach to the budget process. So you get regular updates from everything from Kristin, and then we have the safety piece of the manifest being signed by board members, so if there's ever a question or that, Kristin is available to come down or to bring it up at a board meeting.
So I think it's important that we make sure that we communicate this to the budget committee, let them, let them know that when we do have money left over, we do always consider putting it back in the general fund to get it back to the taxpayer. And I also want to keep this in sight as we move into March, when we do a year-end review, that should be one of the items we talk about and really communicate, over-communicate to the community. Because stuff like this can easily just get lost in the noise of all the other things we do and all the big numbers we bring forward for budgets and stuff. I think in, when we do a quick slide year-end review, we should really make a point to say, and we also returned eighty, roughly eighty-three thousand back to the.
When we were thinking of zero, exactly.
So we're, we are thinking of the taxpayer on both.
And that is after.
Both sides of the road.
All trusts are fulfilled that you guys voted for, which is.
And after a twenty-six thousand dollar building control system here that finally bid it out of nowhere. We tried the Band-Aid that supper. I'm going to be annoying, when we, when I made my little speech earlier about extending the life of the facility and reclaiming these facilities for future generations, this room was originally three classrooms. At some point, I've forgotten what year, it was turned into a library and learning commons. If you look at the documents Andy handed out about school projections, you're going to see that the forecasts, assuming they materialize, are enrollments rising over the next ten years. If those enrollment numbers manifest, having the flexibility with this space because of the renovations that were done through H-Step and because, let's hope, some of the pieces that we're talking about going forward happen, gives us the ability to reconfigure this building for more students. We could drop another, you know, temporary wall in here and have a classroom and a double space or in common instead of triple space. What we've done for this building is give us the potential for adding these enrollment numbers that are projected without necessarily having to build. So it, it could be, it's easy, easy to project from NesDex numbers that down the road, we will all be looking back and saying, H-Step and its, and its facilities first aid follow-on. all be looking back and saying, H-Step and its facilities first aid follow-on actually saved the taxpayer money over a generation because we didn't have to build out because the building had the space to accommodate any enrollment increases. We have to think longer term. We can't just only think about one year over the next. We have to look also at that longer.
Especially with facilities. Is there any questions relating to the year-end financials?
I have a question about the sub-needs. How is that addressed and, or like, I guess, who and how is the?
The HR department is basically trying to get the word out as much as possible. Anyone who'd like to be a substitute, to please come and fill out the paperwork. And right now, they're moving powers around, but it's just, it's a matter of getting people to come and fill out the paperwork. It's about the same as if you come and do the volunteering. It's almost the exact same paperwork, I believe. So it's a matter of, you can either volunteer, well, I think there's one extra step to be a substitute. So, you know, we've offered, said, if you want to volunteer and you consider substitute, to just fill out the substitute paperwork because you then automatically can volunteer because it's kind of the same thing. It's just a matter of trying to find people to do it.
And how is the compensation for subs determined? Or who determines that? The two?
It's set during budget season.
During budget season?
And we do a survey of the neighboring towns.
Okay.
And we're right in line with them.
With the neighboring communities.
Yep. And it's just the pool has shrunk because the number of job opportunities that are out there. You know, so it's a, we have a lot of faithful retirees that will sub for us. We have some dedicated moms who come in and.
I've done it.
Yep, done both the volunteering and substituting. So we're always, you know, welcoming. It's just a matter of going through the process. But it's not a Hollis Brookline issue, it's not even a state of New Hampshire issue. This is a national issue.
And even the districts that do pay more, and there's not many because we're really in line with what most of the state does, but the districts that do pay more still have.
Have a crisis with it.
Yeah.
Nashville's got lots of classroom positions unfilled, right?
Oh, yeah.
Even full-time ones?
Yeah. Well, we had a computer position at the middle school unfilled until about 10 days ago.
Oh, that did get filled.
Yep.
Thank goodness.
Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, but you have to realize right now, if you have that skillset in this job market, I'm not necessarily sure you're knocking down our doors for the teacher's competition package.
Yeah.
Any other questions relating to the end-of-year financials?
We should have the first draft FY20 in the next meeting, to give you an idea of where we are at for this year.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much for moving on to the budget-building efforts and updates relating to that.
Yeah, I handed out a couple pieces of information. The CPI, Consumer Price Index, I provided you that because that's typically what we'll use with the Budget Committee when we begin to set guidance. That has not happened yet. We'll actually start talking about that at the next meeting. And guidance is a unique formula to our town, and it works very, very well because exempt from guidance are certain items, like special ed costs, because those are mandated. And if a child moves in, the town philosophy has always been to support all learners, so we're not taking money from regular ed to provide those services. So it has worked very well in the past, and I'd like to publicly thank the Budget Committee and look forward to moving forward with them. Also, I provided out, as I said, we use NesDex, which is the New England Schools Development Council. They have historically always done our enrollment data, and they have been within students of what our actuals become. I provided you both the SAU summary and the Hollis summary. I just want to touch on the Hollis summary. And really, the only page I'm going to look at is the projected enrollment, because we had been on a downward trajectory, and that trend is expected to end, and we're starting to see that, you know, and I think you see it a lot in our community when the economy is going well because we see a lot of people working for the corporations around us. So in 2019, which is basically right around our projection, as I said, they're pretty accurate.
You guys, Andy's looking at this page, I'm sorry.
And in 2020, they're projecting us to go up to 1,309 students, which is the fourth page of the Hollis piece. And then.
Page four, I think.
Oh, but to 2029, the 10-year projection showing us back to 1,627 students. Again, that's the Hollis K to 12. So that's not just what's going to be in the primary school, but that's a significant growth in our town of students. And again, typically what happens is you have bubble classes, and we've had that experience here. So I'll be providing this information to Tom Gian, the Budget Committee Chair, and it will be utilized as we go through our budget process. I did just want to take a couple minutes to tell you that we've had Round 1 of the budget process. That's the fun part for principals because they can get to bring everything they can add, even think of, to the budget table. And as Bob will tell you, they come in, they're all excited, and then they have that one meeting with Kelly, and she organizes it, and then meeting two, I show up, and we start talking about what do we need versus what do we want. But I do want to give you some first-round items. And I'm going to start with something that has a significant impact to the Hollis budget, which is the SAU budget. And the SAU budget will actually be before you tomorrow night at the Governing Board with its first draft, and that comes back to you in December for approval. It's a very lean budget, but we are asking for one personnel piece, and that's a Facilities Director, and we've been talking about that for a number of years. It's one of the pieces that we don't have across the SAU, and yet we maintain seven buildings, countless acres of fields, and with, you know, we did H-Step 1 here, where completing the athletic field at the high school, we're probably, if the voters support us, going to come back to Facilities First Aid and continue to move that. But we really see this person as somebody that is needed from a day-to-day perspective. And it's amazing, things that'll happen. We were putting in the solar panel at the middle school greenhouse. Well, the solar panel will come this week, but the actual foundation is in. But during that process, we managed to hit a unidentified water pipe that went across the property that is not on any of the drawings. When we did the robotics project at the middle school, which was going very, very well and has since been pretty much fully executed, once again, we took up a series of cabinets to uncover asbestos tiles that, again, were not on the plans. And those are the pieces that I really see us needing from a Facilities Director, that person who focuses their daily attention on that, works with our custodians, does the CIP plans, does all those things. You know, we make it work. Kelly does yeoman's work. I have learned more about construction than I ever thought I would know. And I have to ask a lot of what I call, you know, inquisitive questions because of my lack of knowledge, but it has gone well. But that's something I think from, when I look at the SAU from a long-term perspective, it's something we really need to evaluate. And then.
I just had a quick comment in the fact that with a Facilities Director, I know a lot of you, when we go in terms of bigger purchases, like windows and stuff, if it's a central person, he can look at it, well, oh, you, Hollis passed it, or when Brooklyn passed it, he can look at a bid for windows across the district versus just two schools at a time.
Right.
And, I mean, we don't really have that in terms of getting close.
I also see a resource like this being very helpful in some of these kind of initiatives that we're doing, like H-Step and First Aid facilities, and takes a lot of the heavy living off your plate, Andy. So it makes a lot of sense.
In terms of, you know, the Hollis budget, to see, have some points of reference, we'll be recommending purchasing the Envision Math Program for four years because we'll get a volume savings on that. We've been very happy with that. We will be moving forward with a social studies focus because we expect the state to approve standards in the next few months. So next year, we would be putting in a lot of professional development around social studies and curriculum work that Gina would lead. In the area of personnel, we are putting in the preschool teacher that we already have on board, as you know, as a result of move-ins over the summer. We need to establish a new preschool program, so that is already being implemented using funds out of the FY19, but it was not budgeted for, so that'll be added in to that.
So you expect that to be a permanent program?
The numbers are, numbers are warranting it.
Okay.
So, you know, we're still watching closely, looking at next year's kindergarten numbers. We might be back to five sections as enrollment continues to grow because we're seeing that trend. We are already using IDEA funds that were sent to the district to do the district-wide substitute nurse because we see that as a definite need. It was brought up last year. We weren't able to officially put it in the budget, but when we had these funds appear, which we were kind of anticipating them, we went immediately there. Now, the struggle is, it's very difficult to find nurses, period. So Bob continues to work on that.
So Andy, you're talking about, so you're saying that that IDEA grant is not recurring?
This was the, you may recall the story for the state of New Hampshire, that X-number of dollars went back to the state from various districts. We had sent about $7,000 back. We get permission as a state to redistribute those, to reutilize them. Because what can happen is, we are responsible through our grant money to make sure that we are providing services for any of the non-public schools that might exist in our catch area. And a lot of times, those schools will decide not to take the federal funding, it's just not in their belief system. But we still don't get to reallocate that. We still have to fund that and still have to return it to the state. So it's not like we can go over to Bob's school and Bob says to me, I'm not going to use it, and now Bob can reallocate the $7,000. No, the allocation has to stay and has to be returned. So that's how that balance came about.
So that's not going to be an annually available dollar?
It is not, and that's why we're looking at putting it in the budget. We are looking at Chromebooks at Grade 3 at HPS, and then Chromebooks up at Hughes as well. Those are not grade-specific, they'd be funneled out to a variety of places. One thing that we're seeing, as you recall from Gina's multiple presentations on House Bill 1612 around security and safety, machines are going to have to have Windows 10. And believe it or not, there are many school districts across the state that have computers, like we do, that still do not run Windows 10. So this is a cost, to give you an example, you're probably going to be looking at around, you know, $25,000 at HPS and about somewhere around $30,000 to $40,000 at Hughes.
Is that just software upgrades or hardware necessary?
It's the hardware, yeah. It won't run it. And again, I'll editorialize it, HB 1612 was supposed to have no cost impact.
Yeah, it's a big forklift.
Right.
Equipment.
We will continue with our security upgrades. One of the things that Bob did exceptionally well at the middle school that he still works extensively with is security. So we're looking at continued cameras. If you've been up to Hughes recently, you'll notice that now it's the first set of doors that are locked. So once you're inside, you're still not in the building, you're in the foyer, which is the design. I think over time, we'll probably extend those windows and give greater visibility to who is in the foyer. But that's all a logical, methodical piece, and we are very pleased with the steps we have taken. Depending on the Facilities First Aid will impact how much we will have in the Maintenance Trust. Because again, not knowing if the article passes, we will probably have to have a backup article for Maintenance Trust because there are certain things, like a handle of three, but more of a regular maintenance piece, items under $20,000, that will still need to get done. So it goes well. The next round is what comes out publicly, but we list everything that was in Round 1, so you'll know who I've made happy and who I've not made happy. And it's a balancing act because pretty much getting rejected in one year simply means it needs to be brought back to another year so that we continue to prioritize it and stay within guidance. Because if we go with a 2% guidance number, and I have no idea what it will be, but just using that, you'd be looking just at about, in the area of right around $200,000. So again, with special ed exempted from that. So I don't want to give this notion that we're not well-funded because we're very well-supported by our community. And next month, to get a much more formal presentation, Caroline gets the first brief for that at the discussions at BudCon. Because as a Budget Committee town, our Budget Committee actually is the ones that do the budget work. Now, we could decide as a school board and a Budget Committee to have two different numbers and put forward two different numbers to voters. We have worked very hard not to do that because I think that clear consensus, and we have a Budget Committee who's committed to our students as well. They just look at it through a different lens, and it's, but I am, in my, this is my sixth year, I have never sat before them with a need that they didn't support.
I agree with that.
Any other questions relating to the budget-building process?
If not, we'd like to hear updates relating to hiring.
I want to, I want to continue to go.
I think you're on a roll.
I'm on a roll. Yeah. The hiring for all hourly positions is a continued struggle. You know, as in the principal's memo, we're finally fully staffed for custodians, and that's probably taken us a year. But yet, at the co-op, we have two custodial openings. I'm very pleased, you know, Bob and his crew have done yeoman's work because we have, I believe it's a full complement of paraprofessional staff.
Yeah, we're fully staffed.
And when, at your meeting you went to, we were one of the few districts that was staffed.
And two positions in particular across the district, we've, because of increased need in our ELL population, we've had a number of families move in over the summer. We've needed to hire a full-time ELL teacher.
What is ELL?
English language learner, so they're speakers of other languages. And we have approximately about a dozen different, you know, languages spoken in the homes. And so that is a very, very difficult position to fill. But I had a community member reach out to me of a family that was relocating, and a person was a certified ELL teacher. So we've just finished the vetting process for that position. And then a second position is, that will be used here in the Hollis District, but will be sort of shared district-wide, is a speech-language pathologist, which again, most of our speech-language pathology services come through Boothby, and they're contracted services. And so we're able to eliminate one of the half-time contracted services in Hollis to bring in a full-time speech pathologist, so we're getting twice the amount of contact hours for less cost than the half-time position. And the person comes with a great deal of experience, and we're, again, we're still vetting through the hiring process, but, so excited to fill those two spots. One of the areas that we did not have any luck filling and currently are holding off on is the hiring of the Assistant Director position at the SAU. I do feel like between myself and Amy Rowe, who continues to work for the SAU, and we're stipending up a couple of responsibilities to some of our leaders within our buildings, but we're able to handle all of the needs, the administrative needs and student services under the current model that we have. And, but, you know, moving forward, we'll have a longer-term conversation about that position when we start to look ahead to next year.
Is the ELL teacher at both schools, the primary and the upper? Is that a shared position?
Yes, yeah. They're across all six schools.
Oh, that one's all across all?
All six schools, yeah. We have 20 students who require different levels of intensity and service needs.
Okay.
One of the areas that we traditionally have not had difficulty, but we're starting to experience it, is with teachers. There are less young men and women coming into the profession. I think that's based, and historically has been based around when the economy's been very good. Math and science people, a lot of times, will come out of their education programs and realize there are other opportunities. So I do have a little bit of a concern because we will be experiencing some maternity leaves this year, and I don't think those will be as easily filled as in the past.
Is that a long-term substitute scenario there?
Yes. Yes, yeah. It's where, you know, typically, the shortest span will be six to eight weeks. Most likely, it's typically from the birth of their child to the end of the school year, and then they return to us the next fall. Excellent. So that's where we are with hiring. I will say we're in much better shape than some of my colleagues, and we're very pleased at the efforts of HR and Student Services in a lot of these areas.
Good.
Thanks, Andy.
Thank you. I see there's an additional item here, which is the gift that keeps on giving, is our water system. So what's up with that?
Well, I had a meeting with the town, and we're looking at the town's 10-year master plan, so I contribute from the educational side of that. And one of the things that I just wanted to mention to the board so you're aware, we probably in the next three to four years need to start to look at what do we do if and when the Hollis water system for the schools in downtown and the middle school is not able to meet the demands. So it's more just a long-range proactive, you know, should we be looking at potentially getting out of the water business and looking at moving that to some other entity. So I'm just putting it out there because it did come up in the 10-year master plan. I'm submitting a document that'll be included in that plan, and in that, it asks us to look at, you know, how we should be approaching the water system. And we do, I think, a fantastic job for our resources right now. Our water is tested every month. You know, we have the pump houses right here, our custodians maintain that system. That takes care of your whole Main Street area and Town Hall, as well as your middle school. The middle school via the co-op has an easement, and the actual, some of the controls for the water system are in the science lab under the trap door at the middle school. So it's a very efficient system that has served a town tremendously, but it's just more, is it sustainable? So I think that's the question.
Before you came, and Rob was on the board at the time, and I was one of these folks out here, every year, for year after year, five years, you know, the pipes go from, not Rocky Pond itself, but from the Rocky Pond Station, which is called, named after the road, not the pond. All this plumbing into the center of town goes under the wetlands. And there were relentless leaks, they couldn't get to the pipes, right? To find all the leaks, they finally found, it was endless amounts of money. And there was tremendous concern about contamination getting into the plumbing, et cetera. So just tons of money, a huge amount of time on the part of staff, right? Not water staff. So, okay, fine, we got it fixed, and it's running smoothly now, but just like, I mean, I remember as a citizen, and I'm sure you remember as a board member, it can't stay static like that, something's going to...
And that's it. And the other piece is, we would not have the capital if it went to fix it.
If that went, we'd be in big trouble.
Right, and I know...
And middle school would be in big trouble because you can't run a school without water.
The critical distinction being that school districts can't keep money year over year, and towns can't.
It's a weak link. It's a big weak link. So what, I know we established a water system trust, and, you know, as we're kind of talking about this long-term planning, you know, will it sustain our needs going forward, things like that, that is the Rocky Pond facility. What type of professional services might we need to come in and help us look at our system and to say, and to make recommendations as to, you know, long-term planning? Do we have to resource water somehow, you know?
Again, working with the town manager and Development Director for the town's long-range planning, we will have some discussions around that. It's just more, it just came up, and it's really something that, we want to be ahead of this one, you know? So we may bring in a water company, you know, from one of our neighboring towns to do some studies and look at that, and maybe give us their thoughts on the best way to approach it.
Okay, all right. I guess more on that later. Okay, very good. So we're going to move into our deliberations to see what actions the board will take regarding the policy memo submitted by the Policy Committee, 734.
So do we want to do EHAB first, or do we want to do what's already written out and add EHAB at the end?
Let's just follow the script there.
Let's do EHAB at the end, if you don't mind.
All right. So the script says, so we move to amend JCA, Policy JCA, change of school or assignment. In the third paragraph, by inserting, quote, "will present the matter to the school board, the board must vote to approve the reassignment before the reassignment can occur upon school board approval, the superintendent," close quote, "before," quote, "may approve reassignment," close quote, and accept the second reading as amended.
Second.
Discussion.
So I'll just point out that the, I think the discussion last time, the first reading was to add sort of what the school board's role is, and so that's what we've done with the, you can see it on the track changes. The other comment was that potentially RSA 19314 slash A had been rescinded and was no longer valid, and upon further research, that was not true.
Sorry about that.
Nope, it's fine. So those were the changes on JCA.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? 500.
Okay, JEC. I move to accept the second reading of Policy JEC, manifest educational hardship as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
There have been no changes since last time.
Okay, seeing none, all in favor? 500.
Okay. I move to amend Policy EHB, data records retention, by replacing quote-unquote "is" with quote-unquote "are," deleting the comma following regulations and the word quote-unquote "also." Replace quote-unquote "addresses" with quote-unquote "address," and accept the second reading as amended.
Second.
Discussion.
These are just grammatical changes.
No big material changes.
Right.
All right, seeing none, all in favor? 500.
To, I move to amend Policy GADA, employment references and verification prohibiting aiding and abetting of sexual abuse, by replacing quote-unquote "recommendation" with quote-unquote "reference," and accept the second reading as amended.
Second.
Discussion.
So the change here was based on the conversation at the last meeting of just reference versus recommendation, so we've replaced recommendation with reference because we felt like that was just a little more, not giving a recommendation, just giving a reference.
Reference, right.
Verification and reference instead of anything about a recommendation.
So you just used the word verification. Why would you not use that as the word instead of reference and recommendation? So it could say, "are prohibited from providing a," well, you do have to legally provide a verification of employment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so not interchangeably, kind of what we were just, sorry about that.
Right. We, a reference versus recommendation. We have removed the word recommendation from the policy.
Yeah, and I recall that based on our discussion, because we got kind of stuck on the idea of providing recommendations under these conditions, and we're like, yeah, no, prefer that that not be there. Any other conversation or concerns relating to the amendments? Seeing none, all in favor? 500.
Policy JEB. I move to accept the first reading of Policy JEB, age of entrance as presented.
So I read through this, and it kind of, it reminded me of a very recent conversation I had as early as today relating to this. And the question I had was, I didn't see anything in this policy that really spoke to validating residency in the town. Now, I don't know if JEB, yeah, I figured it's separate policy.
It's a separate policy. Yeah, residency is a different policy.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't at least cite that policy with JEB? Because it seems to me they're kind of linked. I'll certainly let the experts look at that and make a recommendation relating to that.
I agree with your statement, Rob.
Yeah.
I think it needs to be at least referenced.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not entirely concerned that we're not speaking about that here in this, but at least referencing the other might be in order.
Can I take that back to the Policy Committee and get back to next month?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And hopefully, as of this evening, we'll be in first reading, so it's all good.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments relating to JEB?
The paragraph, incoming transfer students in grades two through six will be initially placed in accordance with data forwarded by the sending district, then stricken as such placement is tentative and subject to reassignment by superintendent of schools or his or her designee.
But that's to replace at the bottom?
It's just to put it at the end.
So we've moved it to the bottom because it addresses actually all three, it addresses the kindergarten, grades two through six, and then grade one. That's what, that was the intent there.
Perfect, thank you.
So the format, Carol, is that the strike-throughs are strike-throughs and underlines our proposed new language?
I'm aware.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't.
I'm fully aware. I'm an editor by trade. I know exactly.
Excellent.
Know all about, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? We're in first reading.
So we move on to JLCB. I move to accept the first reading of JLCB, immunizations of students as presented.
Second.
Discussion.
So this here, we just amended it to specifically note that this is also applicable to homeschool students that may be enrolled proportions of the day. And then we also just added a legal reference here, the RSA related to physical exams of students, of pupils.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? 500.
JLCC. I move to accept the first reading of Policy JLCC, head lice slash pediculosis as presented.
Second.
Discussion.
So this came out based on the policy updates that the National New Hampshire School Board Association does in the spring, and they had just updated this policy to more accurately reflect that it's related to head lice and not communicable diseases, and also just add in a few things to reduce the stigma or embarrassment around a child that may have these conditions.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? 500.
I move to reconsider Policy EHB, data governance and security.
Second.
Discussion. So would this reconsideration be, are we moving it back to second reading, or is it third reading? What are we calling it?
No, we, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, did we approve this? And what we're looking at, well, we had approved it here, we went to the co-op, there was one change in wording that we basically agreed with.
Okay.
It has now been approved at the co-op in Brookline, and we're asking for reconsideration just for that one wording change, and then it will be across the SAU consistently.
I see.
I think that's correct. So first, we have to vote on reconsideration and then vote on...
And then open it?
Looks like it, that's how Don's got it laid out.
Okay. So any other questions on reconsideration? Seeing none, all in favor? We are now reconsidering.
I move to amend the last sentence in the second paragraph of Section F, like Frank, by deleting, quote, "when necessary," close quote, and adopt as amended.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? 500. We're now consistent.
That's all the policies say. Is it right?
Yes, that's it for policies.
So do we need a non-public this evening?
We do.
We do?
We do.
All right, I will take a motion under RSA 91A.
I move the board by roll call to a non-public session pursuant to RSA 91- A colon 3, Roman numer.
A second.
Is it A or C, or both?
Let me see. It is A, reputation.
It's A, compensation, and, well, C is reputation, so...
It's reputation and contractual.
So by roll call?
Amy, I, sorry.
By roll call vote, yeah.
Brooke Arthur, aye.
Carol, aye.
Amy, aye.
Rob, aye.
Come here.
Okay.
We're going right across...